...open meetings act. Board member James Irvin is unable to attend the meeting tonight. Please remember that items do not have to be taken in the order they're shown on the agenda. And please join us in turning your cellphones off or switching them to some type of silent mode. Tonight is Steve Green's birthday. And in that honor, in that honor, I'm going to ask him if he will open us to the prayer.
Let's pray. The gracious and most dearest heavenly father, we thank you that we have this opportunity to come here tonight to do, to go about the business of dealing with your children and the kids of this community. We pray that you will be with us and the wisdom that fall under your guidance will be upon this room and upon the people in this room as we make decisions. And pray that we will always keep the children foremost in our minds. Pray that you'll be with us as we go through the night. And most of all, thank for your son, Jesus Christ. In these things we ask you in your most holy name. Amen.
And thank you, Steve. If anybody's compelled to sing happy birthday, we'll do that at the end of the meeting. And now I'll ask Mr. Howard if he will lead us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor to Texas flag and I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one
Thank you very much. First order of business tonight is a consideration, board action of official renaming of the Martin Educational Center for Achievement, the current Martin School of Choice. For that, I'll call on Dr. Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board members, please turn your attention to page eight of your board document. Tonight, I bring to you a recommendation to rename the Martin Educational Center for Achievement, the Malcolm Rector Technical High School. The campus will retain the name, in other words, the campus where it sits right now will retain the name, Linville B. Martin School. But the high school of choice will change names to the Malcolm Rector Technical High School. We're doing this now in preparation for our move out to the new Nacogdoches ISD Tech Center in January. In January, that facility that you all approved in phase two, the projects last week will become the Malcolm Rector Technical High School. The phase two portion of that project will become the Malcolm Rector Technical High School. We want a new phase to that school since many people associate it with discipline. Our school of choice is a school designed for students who want a different type of high school, different type of experiences they go through high school. And we're going to be able to offer it to them through the Malcolm Rector Technical High School. The committee chose to name the facility after Dr. Rector because of Malcolm's dedication to this school district. Dr. Rector was born in Nacogdoches County and came back in 1979 when he served over 10 years as the district superintendent. Malcolm also served as superintendent of Beaumont ISD. The name is fitting, not only because Dr. Rector's legacy is great in this community, but also because he began his career as an ag teacher. He was also selected as the superintendent of the year by the Texas Association of Vocational Administrators and Supervisors. So as you can see, Malcolm was certainly interested and involved in vocational and technical education. Malcolm cared about Nacogdoches, and I'm honored to bring the recommendation to you tonight to rename the Martin Center for Educational Achievement, the Malcolm Rector Technical High School, effective immediately. When the school shifts to the new building, that portion of the building that you all approved in phase two will carry the name, the Malcolm Rector Technical High School.
I'd have a recommendation from the administration. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept this recommendation.
All right. We've got a motion from Mr. Green, a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Howard. Any questions or comments? I'm proud to be doing this. That's my comment. We thank you for letting us use your husband, your father's name. We appreciate that a lot. Any other questions or comments?
Does anybody want to say anything?
Would you all like to say anything? Please.
I just want to thank Dr. Hayes and the Board of Education and all of our friends. And I'm going to be extremely honored, but you probably remember he worked very, very hard for this school. And his major objective was that every student in the Nacogdoches Indian Student School had the ultimate opportunity to learn. And I think that this school will be a big step in that direction.
Thank you.
My family.
Please.
This is my oldest son, Jeffrey. He's in Adley, Texas, and his wife is a lead teacher in Adley ISD. And we all get to talk to him.
We understand that.
And my youngest son, Tommy, and his wife, Dana, they live in Hell, Texas. And he's a doctor in South Lake, Texas. My youngest son, Randy, and his wife, Daisy, they live in London. And I'm just wrapping up.
Don't get comfortable because we're going to want some more pictures in just a moment. But right now, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of this, would you please show with their hands? And that is naturally unanimous. It is changed. Thank you very much. Would you join us here at the front, please? The whole family.
Everybody. Let's go. Please. Please. This is going to be a good time. I don't know if I'm on. I'm on the side of my seat. It's tough. I'm glad that he's here. Juan and Malcolm certainly left a legacy, a great legacy here in this district. Big shoes to follow for anybody who follows. We would like to present you with this plaque that says, "In honor of Dr. Malcolm Rector for his service to Nacogdoches ISD, we dedicate the Malcolm Rector Technical Hospital, August
Can I say something?
Yes.
Mr. Coker's going to be the guy that's going to be in charge of that school. Kind of raise your hand a minute. And somewhere down the road, we might need to get referee school to be going on at that technical. (laughter)
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
This is the time the board has set aside to receive citizen comments. Individuals wishing to address the board should have completed the form located on the table by the entrance door, provided to me prior to the meeting. Comments will be kept to a maximum of three minutes and should pertain to public education. Groups of five or more individuals having the same concern should have a single spokesperson for the group. Individuals should refrain from yelling, using profanity, interrupting other speakers, or engaging in other disruptive conduct during the board meeting, including this public comment time. The board cannot respond to complaints in this open forum, but can inform you the complaint procedures under board policy. Forms will be considered on a first come, first served basis, and the total time allotted to this portion of the meeting is 30 minutes. Mr. Michael Martin will keep time for us, and I will call it to the speaker's attention when they have reached their time limit. Damon Yarborough is the first person on the list. And if you'll come forward to the microphone here and introduce yourself. Thank you, sir.
Have them state their relationship to them.
And yes, sir. If you don't mind stating your relationship to the district, that you live here, it's fine.
Taxpayers. Thank you.
My name is Damian Yarborough. I've been a citizen here in Nacogdoches my whole life, 34 years. Happy birthday, Mr. Green. Been knowing him for a long time.[685.81][685.81](laughter) I'm here tonight in favor of the bond for the two new schools. I was at the board meeting Tuesday night that we had at Emeline Carpenter, and it came to our attention that it needs to be a lot of work done. The conditions there are not, are not conditions that the kids can learn in. And we just think that our kids deserve an equal opportunity to have a nice school to learn in. They shouldn't have to go outside to use the restroom. The gym is in terrible conditions. And it's also brought to our awareness that it hasn't been dealt with in years, even with the other schools that have, have been reconstructed and have been rebuilt. And we think that as a community, that we can make it a great learning environment for our kids. And so we just asked the board to take into consideration to rebuild Carpenter in the same spot. And that's all there.
Thank you. Next, we have Leonard Sweet, or Sweat? I'm sorry. Sweat?
That seems to be him.
And in the interest of time, Amber Teal will be next. If you could make your way to the microphone, please.
Good evening. I'm Reverend Leonard Sweat. I'm president of Nacogdoches NAACP. I'm a member of the Progressive Leadership Program. I'm also a member of the Community Improvement Program. And I appreciate this opportunity to speak. I want to speak on Emeline Carpenter. I thank the board for this opportunity, as I said. And we believe all people should be treated fair. We believe in no, no matter what the color of their skin is, everyone should have the opportunity to obtain a good and solid education. We also believe in neighborhood schools. Emeline Carpenter was built in 1964. I think I've attended Emeline Carpenter beginning in 1965. And the school should be equally facilitated with good teachers, good teaching resources, top-notch technology, and the buildings that are comfortable for the students, which who are most affected by the conditions of the facilities. Now, Emeline Carpenter needs, in my opinion, needs to be torn down and rebuilt in the same location. This school is a historical school. Many black students have gone through those doors and gone to have successful careers throughout the country. And I think that school needs to stay there in order for things like this to still be happening in the black community. Now, not only in the black community, but in the community of Nacogdoches, Texas. Yes, many black people live in the area where that school is. And I've heard comments in the facility committee meeting, I was on the finance committee, and some white person kept saying, "Those people don't vote." And after the third time I asked, you said, "Those people, what did you mean? Why? They don't vote, and it's unsafe in that community." Now, I have taken records from the police department. I've copied them. Well, I've got, went online. Police, Seabee made the graphs himself. That area that that school is located in is not the highest crime area in Nacogdoches, Texas. Now, if you base it on an incident that happened not long ago, I understand your fear. But it's just as safe in that area as it is any other part of the town. Now, some people, when the comment was made, they don't vote. Who is they? I said to them, "If you're talking about black people, there are black people in that area that do vote. And there are black people in that area who pay taxes. We understand people need to vote. In my organizations that I am in, we'll do whatever we can to raise the enthusiasm about voting for a board election that will include Emeline Carpenter being torn down and built back up in the same area. We love that school, and we want that school to stay. Thank you."
Amber Teal is next. Mr. Stephen Wright, if you'll approach the microphone. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Amber Teal. I'm a Nacogdoches resident, graduated from Nacogdoches High School in 2006, and I'm now a Carpenter parent. I was on the facilities steering committee this summer, and I really enjoyed it, met a lot of good people. And when I saw the bond issues and I came to the last school board meeting, the special meeting that we had, I was kind of, kind of offended by some of the school board members' their comments and their facial expressions and just the way they acted. So that pushed me more to want more for our children, especially the ones at Carpenter. So I started a Facebook page, a Facebook group, which involves a lot of Carpenter parents. We had a meeting on Tuesday just to inform the community of what's going on. Myself, along with the NAACP, have walked the streets and passed out flyers to inform people of what's going on. At the meeting that I held, we presented the two board options, just as they were, the exact presentation that was given here. And then we took some votes, and I'd like to share those with you. The first question was, "Do you feel like the presented bond addressed appropriate issues?" And it was 17 and no. The next question, "Do you feel as though the children here need a new school?" Key word being "need." 21 people said yes, nobody opposed to it. The next one, "Do you feel as though the children at Carpenter deserve," key word "deserve," a new school? 21 said yes, zero said no. "Do you think that the location, meaning the neighborhood of Carpenter, is safe?" 20 said yes, two were unsure. Another question was, "Would you support the bond if Carpenter would be rebuilt on this exact location?" 22 said yes, no one opposed. "Would you support the bond if Carpenter would be rebuilt in a new location?" People were mixed because they wanted to know the exact location. I think that's very important for you all to hear because the representatives of that meeting were people from the community. The facilities steering committee members who were present did not vote. So this is basic, this is straight from the community. I walked down railroad and talked to some parents, which there were about 10 kids outside playing. And I spoke with a couple of people about it, and they were upset. They said, "We've been fighting this for years, and it doesn't make any sense. Why do they want to take our school out of our community, away from our children? Our children are now able to walk to school. They moved that school, they can no longer walk to school. A lot of those parents don't have vehicles. They're worried about, okay, if they move the school, I don't have a car, what do I do? If a kid misses the bus, they're going to miss school." I just ask that you take into consideration what the community needs, what the community feels, their opinions, and the children first.
Thank you, Ms. Teal. Mr. Wright and Dr. Judy Abbott be next.
Good evening, members of the board, President Davis and Dr. Hayes. I think most of you all know me. I'm Stephen Wright, and I'm kind of in this unique perspective. It's not actually that unique. There's a lot of us in the community to have what I joke is the three-pronged commitment to NISD. We're parents of NISD students, we're employees or teachers of the district, in my case, and a distant third, but still importantly, we are taxpayers as well. And there's a lot of us. And we truly are NACISD. We live and breathe this school district and have a lot of pride and joy in it. And this time of year, couldn't get away from it if we tried. But just, just to let you all know, I'm not going to talk too much. I just want to echo what Mr. Yarborough and Reverend Sweat and Ms. Teal have commented, as well as some of the things the facilities committee has already commented to you all about at last week's meeting and in formal discussions before, or in their correspondence with you. And I just want to say that I do support the bond package. The facilities committee has worked really hard this summer, during the summer, to actually prepare this. Option A and option B are both very viable options. I think that data's been shown. I know the teachers committee really looked at option A as a primary example of how we could realign to really benefit our students, but either option would be sufficient to build essentially two new elementary schools that I think we've shown are needed. I do want to say this, I want to just echo the comments of the three speakers before me and say that despite all the great things in that package, Carpenter has to be a priority. If the bond package were to go on the ballot as some sort of smaller package, which I would hope it wouldn't, but if it does, I would just ask that the board really make Carpenter a priority. I know that as a district, we're really focused on, you know, to be frank, recapturing some of those students who have left the district. And that's fine. That's not a bad goal. But we have several thousand students that come to our classrooms every day that are already here, that are right here, that we serve on a regular basis. And I think those kids need to be a priority. Those are our students, they come to our classes every day. I know as a parent, my children do not, well, I have one in middle and one in elementary, but they're not zoned into Carpenter. And yet, as a teacher, every day I see students who've come from Carpenter to McMichael who have a lot of pride in the campus despite all of its obstacles. So just imagine what we could do with this bond package to make Carpenter and our school district a better place. So I just encourage you all in the upcoming meeting, hopefully, to get the bond on the ballot. And as Reverend Sweat and Ms. Teal and Mr. Yarborough and others have already commented, we are committed to putting more boots on the ground and pounding the pavement a lot more than last time and not being complacent to make sure we do what's right for NISD students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Your last is Dr. Judy Abbott.
Good evening, President Davis, board members, and Dr. Hayes. I'm pleased to have this opportunity to speak very briefly about the bond issue. I'm coming to you as a homeowner in District Five, and I care very much as a citizen of Nacogdoches city and county of what happens in this, in the public schools. As most of you know, I work in education and am very involved in what's happens in Nacogdoches ISD, as well as in ISDs across the county. But I'm coming as a citizen and coming to say that there are citizens, and a large number of citizens, who are supportive of the recommendation that the school board pursue a bond issue. And we're supportive of the recommendation that you do it sooner rather than later. Two, we're supportive, I'm supportive, of the recommendation that the bond issue that comes before you have two new schools, two new elementary schools. I think the finance committee, and what I know of the facilities committee, has documented evidence that there are enrollment issues that warrant two new schools. I support that as a citizen of Nacogdoches. Thirdly, as a caring, compassionate citizen, as well as an educator, I support the idea that Carpenter be considered as one of those two new elementary schools. That Carpenter be considered as a rebuild in, at, or near its current location. The concept of neighborhood schools is a grounded concept, and I recommend and support the idea that a neighborhood such as the Carpenter District or service area would, takes great pride in their school. And I support that idea. So I again echo the four people that came before me in supporting the issue of the bond, in supporting that there is a documented need for two new elementary schools, and that you seriously consider that one of those elementary schools be a rebuild of Carpenter. The children of Nacogdoches deserve this request. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we move to information items and reports. We have come to that part of the tonight's meeting, and we'll begin with the superintendent's report. Dr. Hayes?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, school's starting very quickly. We will start on Monday, bright and early, so young people be ready to go. And parents, you can throw a party when they go, I suppose. But we're excited that they're coming, aren't we, staff members? Really excited. We had a great convocation on yesterday. It seemed like it was quite a while ago, but it was just yesterday. Our speaker was John Foley. John Foley with the Blue Angel fame, also John Foley with the fame of being a presenter and motivational speaker at many, many Fortune 500 companies. We were, we were excited that he came here, and we were more excited when he left. And I don't mean that because he left, but I mean more excited the fact that he excited us. That was kind of a joke, but nobody got it. It's okay. That's all right. One of his, one of his catchphrases is "glad to be here." So board members, you all have a little thing on your place that says hashtag "glad to be here." Every one of our employees got one of those yesterday. This is the only time of the year that we bring every employee together. And when they went away from there, I can tell you that everyone who I spoke with and everyone who's spoken to me about people they've spoken to have said that they went away very excited and are glad to be here. So thank you for allowing us to bring him here. And one thing that I did yesterday, and you know what, it's kind of, kind of, everybody's kind of feeling a little pressure right now, is I encourage people to take out their cellphone and take a selfie and put in a hashtag "glad to be here" or "I am NACISD." So if you want to do that right now, you can. I would encourage you to. But as the president said, keep it on, you know, keep it turned off as far as the sound is concerned. But I encourage you to do that. Surely you're glad to be here tonight. We've got some great things that we're going to be talking about and some great work in the district. Campus principals, moving to the next item, have done some amazing things this week along with their staff members. If you go by any of those campuses, you will see training. Ms. Dowdy and her team have been putting together the training along with the principals. And of the campuses that I've been to, it's been amazing to see the spirit on those campuses that are focused on doing what's, what's best for children and making an impact this year on academics and really creating love and an environment of love for our children. And that's not, that's as much as we can ask for. We want that environment of love and support, and we want the high expectations for those kids. So principals and staff members who are present, thank you very much for the work that you've done there. Let's say this to Mr. LaRue and his team. The buildings look better than ever at the beginning of school. So thank you very much, Mr. LaRue, Mr. Mike Davis, and all the awesome team that you work with. Thank you. If you've not driven by our campuses, whether you're a board member or somewhere out there, I encourage you to do that. Go inside. If your, if your campus has a corridor, a hallway, that thing is shining, the cafeterias are shining, even the toilets are shining right now. Okay? So I'd encourage you to go in, take a look at those. So thank you again, Ms. LaRue, for the hard work. for the hard work. Uh, tonight is the first home football contest in our new Dragon Stadium. It is a scrimmage, so, so, but, but it is a football contest in the Dragon Stadium, and if you're not driven by that, it looks, it looks good. Looks, uh, they've done a very good job, uh, good work on that, uh, and as we've talked about numerous times, and as you can find on our website at nacisd.org, you will see, uh, the cost effectiveness of that stadium, that, the turf, so, uh, but more than anything, it's, it's an area where our community has many events, many people go to, and it's a, it is a very nice, um, stadium, so I encourage you again to go by there and look at the stadium and, and, uh, be, be proud of that. So again, Mr. LaRue, thank you for that. Um, kind of update on personnel, we are still in need of some teachers, specifically, I talked with Mr. Martin, and we need two fifth grade teachers still, uh, and, uh, for, you know, some reason those folks are hard to find this year, I think the, uh, the, uh, there, there is a, a shortage, for sure, but there are people who are hiring more teachers now, uh, I guess just because of the number of folks that we have in our, in our schools these days. So we are still needing two fifth grade teachers and, and perhaps some others that we'll talk about a little bit later, but those are the two, two areas where, where I know one's over at Brooks Quinn Jones and one's at Fredonia. So you know a fifth grade teacher? Help us out here, okay? Good news, we have got our preliminary first report back, and we got a perfect score on that, on that first report. That's Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas Report, Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas Report. Uh, it, it, uh, basically, I don't believe we've ever gotten a perfect score. We've gotten, we've gotten good scores, and we've always been up there at, at the top achievement, but we've never gotten perfect scores. So I applaud you, Dr. Knox, and your team for that great work on that, earning that perfect score on the first report. We also received news that we are a Platinum Award winner from the Texas Comptroller for Financial Transparency. This is the second year they've offered that, and this is the second year we've gotten it. So, so as you can see, uh, we are very transparent with everything that we do, we put information out there more than we have to. Uh, everybody, you know, brags on being a Gold Award member of the, uh, Comptrollers, we are Platinum Award, which is as high as you can get. So congratulations again, Dr. Knox, and your team for that. Wanted to recognize a, a, uh, community partner today, uh, that is Solid Foundations. Solid Foundations is what, what, we're going to try to have a Community Partner of the Month that I identify and re, and recognize to you at the board meeting. Uh, Solid Foundations is a after-school tutorial group that is headed by, uh, John and Mabel Cannings, and they, uh, it's right up here at the, uh, Family Bible Church, I believe is what it's called, on the right-hand side, if somebody helped me if that's Family Bible Church?
Bible Fellowship.
And Bible Fellowship, okay, and, and, uh, they take our kids after school, and they work with them, uh, through, through partnerships with the community partnerships with Stephen F. Austin, partnerships with Nacogdoches ISD, and I highlighted something that Mr. Cannings said, uh, gave me a report about. He said Solid Foundation serves approximately 200 students annually at its main location, diversity center, which is Alhale Loop, and four satellite community centers, experiencing around, about a 65% success rate, and they work with mostly economically disadvantaged students, and, and the GPA for those students this year was, uh, was, uh, 2.5 or higher. So that's great work, but, from, uh, Solid Foundations. We have great community partners just like this all over Nacogdoches ISD, and, uh, I applaud Mr. Cannings and Ms. Cannings and the work that they do out there, so, uh, if you know those folks, please be sure to tell them thank you very much for the work they do. Uh, also finally, we're going to say goodbye to a couple of people today. This is the last, uh, board meeting, that Rayanne Duchesne will be with us. Rayanne is our Communications Director, she's heading off to, uh, Texas A&amp;M University. She's going to be working, uh, in a similar job, uh, and, in, at Texas A&amp;M.
Where?
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I said, I said at the, at the meeting the other day, I didn't know what they were talking about, but, but we'll miss her. Uh, you've done an excellent job, Mr. Duchesne, uh, and, you know, I, I, Holly and I speak often about, about the work that you do, and, and about the fact that you, you get so much accomplished when it seems like there's so much to do, but you always get it accomplished, you do it wonderfully. The other day, the convocation could not have gone off, uh, the best one I've ever seen, without your team and the hard work that you guys did, so thank you, you're going to be missed. Ms. Duchesne is also taking two of her three children with her, uh, I hope she doesn't take the five, the, the oldest one who's a senior, uh, because her, her senior, I think, would like to finish school here, but, uh, we will, we will certainly miss them as well, but thank you, Mr. Duchesne. And then we're also saying goodbye to Justin Ickpo. Justin is also going to Texas A&amp;M, uh, but, but they promised me that they're not going together. He says that they, they didn't have any idea that they were, they were both doing that at, at, uh, going and applying at Texas A&amp;M. Uh, Justin will be, uh, working, Justin, help me, help me figure out, because I didn't know exactly what those.
College of Education.
Okay. Communications work at the College of Education, and the College of Education's at, at Texas A&amp;M is, is a large college out there, as it is at, at most of our state colleges, so thank you. Justin, we really appreciated you, the professionalism that you brought to this job and, uh, your, your work, uh, you, you've turned our website into something that I, uh, all of us can be proud of, so thank you very much, Justin, we're going to miss you. Uh, replacing Ms. Duchesne will be Patty Miller. Patty is right here with the glasses, and I'd say a color of the sweater, but I wouldn't know what color it is, but Patty, Patty comes to us from, um, Lehman I Center, most recently, but through, uh, from GE or Lufkin Industries, uh, for, for many, many years, and, and served in a capacity of communications marketing at that, that facility. And replacing Justin is Amber Memms. Amber's over here, and I told her she was going to have to give a speech, but she, she said no, she didn't believe me, but, uh, she also knows that she has huge shoes to fill, uh, literally and figuratively, uh, but, but, uh, Amber is up for the task and, and will do a great job for us, and we're glad you're here, Amber. Amber's been working with us as an intern, and she's in her final year at SFA with a job in communications, uh, specifically PR. Yeah, so those are two new employees, I certainly want you to get to know them, and we're excited about, that they're here. Thank you again, Rayanne, and thank you, Justin.
Mr. President?
Thank you.
All right, next is a facilities update, and for that, I'll call on Mr. LaRue. And Mr. LaRue, I want to echo what Dr. Hayes said on your way up here, the, the, at least the outsides of the schools, I haven't been in all of them, but the outsides all look really well, really good. Thank you.
Oh, we, we certainly encourage you to go inside and look around, but let me say that the work has been done by, by your staff, by the Plant Services staff, uh, the majority of which are already here, onboard when I got here, uh, they have been working very diligently. Uh, we've worked the last several weekends, it looks like we're working this weekend. Uh, we're trying to wrap up some stuff, we're not going to meet our target goal of clearing all the work orders, uh, but we are, we are trying very desperately to clear off as many as we can, and try to keep up with, uh, the principals, some of which are here, who are feeding those work orders pretty quick. I'm anxious, we're all very anxious for the students to get back, because we, we know they'll quit sending us work orders for a while, they'll, they'll be busy with the students. Okay, uh, facilities update, um, some of these pictures, although only a week old, are already outdated. We've been really closing and moving quick on a lot of stuff. This is Carpenter Elementary, this is the new exit, um, right there used to be your exit, and we've poured a sidewalk across there, connected to sidewalk that's coming up out of the community. People will, um, will exit here, this is the new entrance coming up into that parking lot, um, so that will be, uh, the drop-off zone for the parents to drive up in. Uh, as you come into that, um, that area, we've cut a new gate into the fence so that, um, the kids can get to the school, can get, get into the school. Um, this is a new fence, it's very difficult to see, but new black fence that goes down over the hill to continue this, the security of the campus, uh, because we had to move that over, uh, to put in the roadway. Also at Carpenter, not sure, yeah, we've got some, some interior shots, this is the new entranceway, for those of you who'd been in Carpenter previously, the, in, the initial entrance was very claustrophobic, very small, uh, we opened it up, took out a wall, uh, put in the new storefront, uh, which, which gives it a much more open feeling, uh, that's, that's been a big improvement. Uh, we've also, it's difficult to see, but we, this is a new office area, this room used to be two rooms, now it's two new office areas. And, there's another office area, uh, here, um, which was on the stage, so we've, we've added office areas and added meeting spaces and, and done what we can do at Carpenter, uh, in a, in a pretty tight timeframe. All of that work interior was done in-house, uh, we contracted the exterior concrete work. Down at the bottom is our new ticket booth, uh, this picture is outdated because all this concrete has been poured now in front of it, uh, that's the stadium ticket booth, um, this is the home side, all this dirt is now new concrete, um, the pictures sure look a lot better on your computer than they end up looking on this, don't they? Con, walkway all the way around the track, uh, new privacy fence behind the fieldhouse, which covers up six air conditioners that were kind of nasty. This is over at the, uh, visitor's side, new concrete in front of all the concession stands, those concession stands will be painted to match the other concessions that are already out there. Uh, underneath, the grandstands has been paved, uh, doesn't sound like a big deal, but, uh, that's our storage area for all of our athletic equipment, pitching area for the baseball team, um, it made a, a big difference to, to pave all that area underneath there on both sides, uh, of the stadium. That's, uh, another shot of the stadium up here is Reggae. Um, that project is moving along very quickly, um, behind the school, this area right here, uh, we were just starting excavation, uh, that area, uh, where the, I'm sorry, that, that's the ag farm. Um, this area, we've, we've done the, what's referred to as over-escavation, where we've come in and taken out all the bad dirt, about eight feet deep, and we've backfilled all that. We should, we should be done with the backfilling, uh, tomorrow or Saturday, uh, so for those of you who've driven by Reggae and noticed it, it is a dusty mess, uh, sorry about that, but that, that will be over, the, the big hauling will be done, the, we'll begin work on the cement pad, uh, and utilities, uh, next week. That project's moving along very well, we've, uh, developed, um, new fire escape plans, exit plans for fire drills, things of that nature, so that project is moving along quite well. Uh, the ag farm is on top, actually on the bottom is a picture of the relocated, um, playground at, at Reggae. Um, the ag farm is, is moving along really well, um, there's a shot of the, the barn, some of the interior, uh, the chicken house, been great discussions on the chicken house, uh, I'm learning, uh, every day about, uh, have you once had a small farm and thought, thought I might have known something about agriculture? I realize, thanks, Ms. Summers, that perhaps I didn't know much. Uh, we, we are gaining ground on what's going to happen inside the chicken house as far as the chickens' comfort. That issue has not been solved completely, but we do feel, uh, with a lot of input from around town, that we, we are closing in on, on a Mr. system to keep our prize chickens...
Happy.
Happy. We're going to have happy roasters. Um, that we poured a bunch of concrete out there today, we poured the entrance at the road, we poured the, uh, sidewalk on the inside around the office area, uh, that project, oh, there's a, there's a, we just jumped backwards to Fredonia, I'm sorry, Reggae. Um, there's, uh, that was the excavated hole, we've now filled that back in. Roof project over at the high school, that looks, that new white stuff looks like a lot of roofing, and it is, but it's about a third of the roof project. Um, and I'm really caught in two worlds, two of our jobs are dusty, nasty nightmares, and, and at the high school, I'm hoping for no rain, because we had to tear the old roof off to put the new roof on, and this is over the gym floor, so, uh, we're, we're hoping for no big downpours, but in any event, that, that project's moving along quite well, we're closing in on about half-done on re-roofing it, and you notice that it's all white roofing, uh, this is a new membrane-style roofing, uh, I believe this structure has, has that, uh, this will reduce our energy costs, helps reflect the, the heat, uh, so it'll, it'll be a much, much improved project. Um, let me just mention briefly also a couple of things that, that aren't, pictures aren't up there. Um, awning work is complete at, um, Fredonia, Nettie, and Carpenter. TJR awnings will start, uh, this coming week, school's in session, but those awnings are not directly attached to the schools as Nettie and, and Fredonia were. Tech Center, um, continue to work closely with Army, uh, bids are due on the 27th of, um, this month for the Tech Center Phase Two. Board members, that will, we will be asking for a special meeting, I'll just go ahead and throw that out there, so that we can get that approved, uh, at the end of the month, so that we can get that project, we've very, established a very, very tight timeline on that project, so every day does indeed matter, uh, so hopefully we can award those contracts. Uh, we'll get them in on the 27th, we need two, three, four days to review them, and then hopefully we can bring those forward with a recommendation on that. We've, uh, begun to reorganize some furniture out at the Tech Center, or, that, that's already there, and, and, and taking our staff out there and introducing them to the building. Uh, as soon as it's officially turned over, we'll clean up the grounds and, and, and take that next step on that. On the ag farm, we also brush-hogged the rest of the property, the other 90 acres of property, which, thanks to the spring rain, was about six feet tall, so we got it knocked down, just in an effort to, to maintain property that we have, to keep it from turning to brush, uh, for future use. Are there any questions I can answer at, at the facility level?
Just one on Reggae, there's some parents asking about the beginning of school and that construction entrance, because that's normally where the parents come in and drop off?
Yes, we've had extensive meeting with contractors, they are well aware that they need to be in, uh, before the parent drop-off, although the parent drop-off is not nearly as bad as, as the pickup. They really stack up at, at, in the afternoon, and the contractors are well aware that not only can they not get in and out during that time, that they need to talk to their delivery people not to be coming down Reggae, because if you've got a big truck, there's no place for you to go. So we, we've had extensive meetings with, with contractors, we had one this morning, uh, in relationship to students and fire drills, and what the contractor's supposed to do when there is a fire drill, uh, as far as shutting down trucks, shutting down equipment, uh, trying to bring the noise level down as, as much as they can.
Thank you.
And, and, thank you for the heads-up on the special meeting upcoming on the, um...
I, I know that's...
TTC, that's great. Um, are, are we on schedule up till this point on the TTC? Do you feel like we are?
As, as far as getting out the bid?
Well, just the work itself, I, I'm not talking about the transfer of the property, of course, but I'm just talking about...
Yeah, I think we're, we're in good position on that building, it, it's basically ready to go, uh, there's just been a, a few minor punchless things that, that need knocked off, uh, and I think as far as Phase Two go, we're, we're given the timeframe that we had to develop Phase Two, I, I think we're in, in good shape as, as far as plans and specifications, we've put out one addendum, um, we had a good, uh, pre-bid meeting, good group of contractors showed up, it, it was good, because they, they know they've got some competition. It was good because they know they've got some competition, so that's always good.
And on the ag farm, were there any further problems on the east side on that runoff? Did that-
Not since it quit raining.
Yeah, I mean, but nothing-
No, nothing-
We got to before it became a real issue.
Yeah, none of our dirt ended up on our neighbor's property.
Thank you.
We had a silt fence well onto our property. Some of it breached the silt fence, but it did not end up onto the neighbor's property. Some of the water did, though. We did have runoff. That has been rectified.
Thank you.
I had the pleasure of going over to Carpenter with Mr. Smith and Mr. Bruton the other day, looking at the new entrance and so forth. Have we done any type of, or given out any information as to how the traffic flow is gonna go when they drop off at that new entrance? I'm not sure which way-
Yeah, that's okay. I'm gonna refer that to Mr. Burton, because he's been working with Mr. Adams on that. Mr. Adams in his-
First of all, they'll have, they send letters out, all the information. They'll make you aware of where those entries are gonna be, where the parents are gonna go during that time and all of that, so they should be well ahead of the schedule on that.
Okay. I know it's a new entrance, it's a new way of doing business over there, so I'm sure the parents would be grateful to know which way to go.
And it's a pretty tight squeeze there, too, as we looked at it, and still, we're trying to work, we were trying to work with the city on making that wider, but the city wouldn't allow us to do this.
Well, the corner entrance is gonna be the main problem, I think, for keeping the cars going where they're not in the street.
But as you see, the gate coming off that side street there, I mean, the road coming off that side street, they will really allow us to pack up some cars on that particular road, which will get them off the street, which was a major problem at that campus at the beginning and ending of school, so it'll help a little, but we'll see how much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I didn't introduce Bob a while ago. Bob is working with us, and I know I've talked to you guys about that previously, but Bob is working with us on the Technical Training Center, and questions with regard to timing and that stuff, he's really been working closely with the city on, county on, the county attorney. So any questions like that, that is specific to us, that relates to facilities, can certainly be deferred to him if you have anything. Thanks, Bob.
Sorry, I didn't introduce you earlier. Sorry about that.
All right, next on the agenda is the 2015-2016 Student Handbook, and for that, I'll call on Mr. Burton.
President Davis, board members, Dr. Hayes, if you will, I believe you have a hard copy of your handbook, along with one that's actually in your board documents. The, at first glance, do they have, sorry, call it the handbook?
Yeah, we have.
At first glance, it looks like there's a lot of changes to the handbook, and there is, but most of the changes were made to the outline of the handbook. Tasby had moved around a lot of the components of the handbook, I guess to make it more user-friendly. The green sections that you will see, you'll have some double, you'll have some double line and then green underlined. All that means is that was taken out and moved to another spot. Where it's double underlined, it's in the new spot. I know that's very confusing, but Tasby had gone over the handbook, of course, and then Mr. Haglund has also looked at the handbook, and he assured the district also that there were no changes, dramatic changes to the handbook, except for the layout of the handbook. All of the changes that have been in the handbook that are new, which would be indicated by the blue section or a red strikeout, were straight from the legislative section, 84, legislative session of 84, which, I will say, by the way, I'm glad to bring the handbook to you right after legislative session. That was extremely fun to do. If you would, look on page 25 of the handbook, and I'm referring to the number on there, not the number in board book. There were, the handbook's broken up into two sections, one being, section one for parents, and then section two is for students and parents. It has a lot of information regarding different things. Most of the things in section two, we covered last month when we talked about our student code of conduct, and so I won't give into great detail about any of those. Any of the changes that you will see that we have made to the handbook will all come from legislative session, of course. On page 25, if you'll flip there real quick, one of the things that is talked about, and it comes from Senate Bill 206, and you'll see the blue writing, and it talks about foster care and the conservatory of foster care, and then below that, also, within the same vein, from Senate Bill 1494, it talks about homeless students. Those sections address that when a student leaves your district and goes to another district, or you have a student come into your district that's been placed there in foster care, then they are entitled to continue on in their education and graduation, and they meet the requirements that they were. In other words, if you have something different that another school wasn't doing, they need to be allowed to continue on their path of graduation. So that's kind of some of the legalese to that. That's really the only major change. There is another section above that that won't take effect until 1617, so we won't visit about that tonight. The only, the only other thing I want to specifically bring your attention to is on page 28, and it talks about compulsory attendance. This is having to do, and this is, of course, in the student section, this has to do with the new age of compulsory attendance, and if you'll notice at the top, it says age 19 and older. You'll see below that in the scratched out, if a student starts school at 18 and then, you know, has the birth there, whatever, then, you know, this and this applies. Now, it has actually changed that to 19 years and older. So Senate Bill 14, I'm sorry, Senate Bill 2398 says specifically that we're talking about 19-year-olds, and then everything under there that you see in blue changes that number from 6 to 19, and so we'll look down the list. It does, you know, talk about how we're about truancy, and those are the things that we talked about last month in our code of conduct. I present to you the student handbook, reorganized, very little changed that we weren't aware of through legislative section, in my rec-
Does anybody have any questions on the handbook of Mr. Burton? Thank you, Mr. Burton. And next, we move on to the 2015-2016 Employee Handbook, and for that, we'll call on Mr. Martin Martin.
Good evening, President Davis, members of the board, Dr. Hayes. We bring to you tonight for an information item, the updated 2015-2016 Employee Handbook. If you, I can bring your attention to page 131 of your board book, and also, at your board packet, you have a yellow tab, your yellow tab as well. You have a table of contents there. We noticed once we uploaded the document in board book that some mistakes were made as far as the numbering of the table of content, so that has been corrected. Wanted to bring that to your attention. Page 145 of your board book, some of the major changes in the employee handbook, breaks for expression of breast milk. This new topic addresses the provisions of House Bill 786 and the Fair Labor Standards Act, which require the district to reasonably accommodate needs of employees who express breast milk. If I may draw your attention to page 167 of your board book. This new change, reporting crime, came from House Bill 1783. It established the right of a school employee to report a crime witnessed at school to any peace officer. This new topic also describes the rights of employees to report an unlawful act under the Texas Whistleblower Act. On page 165 of your board book, another major change is discrimination, under discrimination, harassment, and retaliation, provisions of House Bill 1151 prohibit sexual harassment of unpaid interns, including student teachers. Both of those were added to the topic. On page 172 of your board book, what, another add to the handbook this year, under tobacco products and e-cigarette use. These provisions come from Senate Bill 97, which define e-cigarettes and prohibit the use of smokeless tobacco products and e-cigarettes. These were added. As well, on page 180 of your board book, reports to the Texas Education Agency. Again, this was a provision of House Bill 1783. It changed the standard for reporting possible educator conduct. These were the major changes in the employee handbook for this 2015-16 school year, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions the board may have.
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Martin? Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, sir.
Next, the District Professional Development Plan Year-In Report, and for that, we will call on Melinda Lindsay.
Thank you, President Davis, Dr. Hayes, board members. Tonight, I bring you the 2014-15 Professional Development Initiative summary. And just to remind you, the purpose of our Professional Development Initiative was to encourage our professionals to get 10 to 15 continuing education hours, provide opportunities for them to enhance their instruction in the classroom, provide a variety of choices for our faculty, and retain highly qualified professionals and attain academic growth. Also, we encourage our district and campus collaborations through the district support staff providing professional development, and our principals and curriculum specialists identifying areas of need for our teachers and providing those opportunities. Also, collaborating with SFA and other agencies to include them with their areas of expertise. Also, one of our purposes is to retain highly qualified faculty, offering stipends for attending professional development and supporting effective instruction in the classroom. In 2014-15, we had 285 participants, 160 earned the stipend that was offered, 29 of those had 10 to 14 and a half hours, and 131 obtained 15 or more hours. From the strategic planning, we had nine opportunities that showed design horizontal and vertical alignment. We had 23 opportunities that supported create and support non-traditional and innovation in the classroom. We had 10 that would promote create partnerships, where SFA professors offer professional development, and we had five opportunities that were linked to promote community involvement within ISD. And that was a brief summary. I'd be glad to entertain any questions that you may have.
Do you want to have any questions, Ms. Lindsay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
What was the 200, I guess I got it, 285, my page just got to, is that 57% of our teachers participated in that?
Yes, sir. Yes, teachers.
So we didn't get, we didn't get, so 40-something percent still didn't participate in the-
That's great. And you have to understand, those opportunities were offered, they might have been teaching extended day and after-school activities, therefore they were able to participate.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next, we move to Administrative Regulations for District Vehicle Use, and for that, I'll call on Mr. Burton again. Or is it Mr. Knox? It says Mr. Burton here. How about we come back to that? Next, we have the travel form update, and for that, I will call on Dr. Knox.
Thank you, President Davis, members of the board, Dr. Hayes. If you'll look on page 214 in your board book, our committee met back in March and had some recommendations for Ms. Barbrick and myself to try to condense our travel forms down, and then that committee came back again in August at the request of the board. One of Mrs. Barbrick's main projects this summer was to try to whittle down the travel form so it wasn't so cumbersome. What you see on page 214 is that result. Once the information is entered into the system, only one page will print out, as opposed to in the past, it might have been three. It doesn't alleviate us of our audit responsibility to supply documentation, and we even asked our auditors at a training last week, do we have to bring the badges? And they said, well, you don't have to bring badges back as proof, it's very good, you have to bring something back, and badges are the best way to do that. The next evolution in this process is to make this approval process electronic, and so we tried it a little bit a couple of years ago, and the form wasn't ready. We've looked at doing a third-party vendor coming in, helping us, and it was $40,000. We're not gonna do that either. So Ms. Barbrick is really, really good at this, so we're gonna give her a year to try to work out an electronic process. One of the things we wanted to make sure of is typing your name does count as an electronic signature in the state of Texas, so that approval process will work. Is there any questions? Oh, there is one other thing the committee wants us to investigate. If you'll look, our student meals right now are at $7.50, and they've been that for quite a while. Coach Rashid's gonna look at his budget, the secondary schools are gonna look at their budgets, and try to come back to you with a proposal, maybe in October, of raising those, but I want to have a really good number. I don't want to outprice our budgets for that, but obviously, $7.50 isn't gonna buy much food for our athletes and for our students as well.
That's good. I mean, I was, I saw that $7.50, and I wondered about that myself. The name tag thing-
They said-
Are we denying people reimbursement if they don't bring back a name tag?
No, we're not, but that becomes an auditable thing that the auditors could pull to travel. Agendas were something, they said that you could bring back copies of programs, things like that. They're gonna look into it to make sure what is the threshold that says you went there.
The hotel receipt or the, I mean, you can pick up a badge and leave and never attend a conference, so that doesn't really prove anything.
It doesn't. There just has to be something, and evidently, the litmus test is very weak right now. There isn't anything that, the integrity of our employees will obviously be what does-
And that's kind of what our point has been with our auditors, is that we believe in our employees, and we believe that if they, you know, they're professional folks, and if they go somewhere, we believe they're going, but they've been very persistent about making them bring back something, and we want to try to stay out of trouble with the auditors, so-
We're gonna work with them. I don't want to jeopardize an unqualified audit because we don't bring name badges back, but we'll work with them to come up with a solution.
I guess this also includes board members.
Anyone that travels on district funds.
I better save my name badge.
Be looking forward to seeing that in some kind of regulation.
I'm sure a selfie would probably-
With a hashtag.
Coach, I guess, the one big question is, can you buy enough Whataburger for $7.50? Okay.
Let's cut the cheese.
And the drink. Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Knox. And we will move back to the Administrative Regulations for District Vehicle Usage and ask Mr. Burton.
President Davis and board members, Dr. Hayes, I apologize for that. I was, it's been a long time since I've looked at this, I forgot on that handbook, but I am back on. We talked last meeting, I think it actually came up, we were visiting about the police vehicle that we were getting rid of and the amount of miles on that, and Dr. Hayes had asked that I look at our local policy and then come up with some procedures, not a policy, but some procedures on how we might be able to ensure that we don't have excessive miles on our vehicles. If you will notice in C and B Local, our board policy, it says that district employees shall not be permitted to use district vehicles for non-school purposes, and so, and of course, we go by those guidelines. The issue is that we have, like with our police and some of our maintenance folks, is they are on call from time to time, and they need access to a vehicle. In visiting with Chief Plo, it is actually in- In visiting with Chief Plo, it is actually in our officer's manual that anyone that lives outside of the NACADOCUS ISD district boundaries is not allowed to take a vehicle or will not actually be issued a district vehicle. So, and I think that was done, from what I understand, several years ago with the recommendation of Mr. Haglund at that time. What I've done, or what I've given Dr. Hayes, is just another step that we can look at. At the bottom of C and B legal, it says that, I'm local, it says that you can make other procedures that might help in this case, and what I've done is put in there as a procedure that supervisors of certain departments, of course, being maintenance or some of the other ones that may have people that need to be on call, may be granted with written permission from the superintendent, the use of a district vehicle when they are on call. Now, of course, it also says if you live outside of the district boundaries, you would not be allowed to do that. So basically, the procedure would be that any supervisor that has people that could be on call in a department must come to Dr. Hayes, get a letter stating, or actually, you know, stating the reason they would need it, and then, once he has signed that, they would be allowed, when they're on call, to do that. Of course, you need one outside of the district zone would not be allowed.
No, is this, I'm sorry, is this in addition to the police officers, the maintenance people that are already, that already need to be with their vehicles?
This is, this is kind of how the procedures will be, so we can control and be sure that we aren't missing something, because it's not really addressed in our local policy. It just says that for outside use. It doesn't really go into the point of if they're on call. I believe because of the circumstances of the last incident that Chief Plo has already addressed is, I do not believe that we have that in our local maintenance agreement right now as far as with our employees, but this would pretty much cover anybody, I think, outside of that.
So are we going to revise C and B Local?
No, ma'am, this is not going to change policy, it's just strictly going to be administrative procedures that we'll pass out and let our, you know, our supervisors understand that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next, we move on to our consent agenda. Unless removed from the consent agenda, all items will be acted on with one motion. If there's a board member who wishes to discuss an item on the consent agenda separately, please indicate that item at this time. Okay, I hear another one. In that case, can I get a motion concerning the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Ms. Russian, in a second. Thank you by Mr. Green, all in favor. And that's unanimous. Thank you, board. Next, we move on to the action item. All items will be discussed and acted on separately. First is consideration board action of the adoption of the tax rate for the two thousand fifteen-2016 fiscal year. Calling Dr. Knox again.
Yes, President Davis, board members, Dr. Hayes, direct your attention to page three fifty-eight in your board book. You have the action sheet over the presentation that we gave during the public hearing. Would anyone like to see the presentation again?
I think we're good.
Okay, then, our recommendation is at the bottom of that action sheet, and I would ask whoever makes the motion to read exactly as that says.
In that case, can I get a motion from the board on the tax rate?
I'll make a motion that the administration recommends the following motion. I move that NACADOCUS ISD adopt a tax rate of one point three five seven five per hundred dollar value, broken down as follows. One point one, one dollar and seventeen cents for the purposes of maintenance and operation, and point eighteen seventy-five for the purposes of payment of principal and interest on debts.
I hear a motion from Mr. Green. Can I get a second? Second on Mr. Howard. Any questions or comments? All in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you, board. Next, is consideration of in board action of selecting a voting delegate for the two thousand fifteen Tasb Delegate Assembly, and I see that Dr. Hayes is going to handle that.
Yes, sir. Annually, when we go to the TASB Conference, there, TASA-TASB Conference, there is a, an opportunity for each board to have a delegate present. Last year, our member is no longer on the board, so we are needing a new member to be part of that delegation, if the board so wishes. That, what the delegates do is they, much like this, they hear what's going to be the platform for TASB, what things that they want to support, so on and so forth, and then they take part in the voting part of that. Lufkin, this year, has the president of the TASB, and therefore, they are going to get to present at the TASA-TASB Conference, so we certainly hope that we participate as well.
All right. So at this time-
But you need somebody to-
I'm going to look for volunteers. I think, Holly, is everybody going to the, to the training as far as, you know? So anybody can be a volunteer.
What day is that?
The specific meeting of that, I don't know. I believe it's usually on Friday.
It's Steve Green Day.
I can't disagree with you, Mr. Russell.
I just, I'm not going to be there Sunday.
It's, I believe it's Friday. They take it in the middle of it.
Okay, then, Mr. Green has gracefully, does anybody want to challenge Mr. Green for this nomination?
I think Reverend Urban does, but-
He gets the, he gets to be the alternate. He was close.
But he's the alternate. We're supposed to name an alternate, too, so.
Then can I get a motion to that affect Mr. Howard?
So moved.
All right, so Mr. Green will be nominated as our delegate, and Reverend Urban as our alternate. Can I get a second on that?
A second.
A second by Mr. Russell. Any discussion? All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you, board.
You don't give me the information of where I'm supposed to be.
Holly will.
He'll be in the program.
The consideration of in board action on selection of a bond counsel.
Mr. President, can I ask that we move this, take this out of order and do this after our workshop? It just seems to make sense to do it after we do our workshop.
Sure. Does anybody have any objection to that? You're not leaving, are you?
I'll be here.
Okay. In that case, not a problem.
Thank you.
The board will now conduct the executive closed session, discuss items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act and as allowed by Texas Government Codes five five one point zero seven one, five five one point zero seven two, five five one point zero seven four, and five five one point one two nine. No voting will take place in the closed meeting, and any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in open session, and it is now seven eighteen.
We're going to come back to the workshop pretty fast after a minute.
I hope.
We're going to-
Which pusher?
Are we going to, oh, since we have some people here on the workshop.